Call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for June 4th, 2019. And would like to have the roll call, please.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Buckles?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt said that she would be absentee thing.
Okay. That takes us to item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance. If all would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Corrections and/or approval of the city council minutes of May 21st, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and second, is there any discussion or changes that need to be made on those minutes? Seeing nobody waving at me, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. That takes us to correspondence. Council members, anyone like to go first on correspondence? I think we all got some correspondence.
Yeah. I got an email from a concerned citizen on Fayetteville Park and the sidewalk and they cited poor drainage of the park and sent a video of some of the problems that the park has.
Did anyone respond back to that citizen at all?
No, I haven't.
You did not, but I mean, anyone?
I did. I sent him back letting him know that we sent it back to the Parks Department to start looking at it again.
Thank you for doing that, yes. And when is our Parks Board meeting?
I received the same email and the Parks Board meeting will be next week, Wednesday.
Next week, Wednesday. That's here, up in one of the side.
It'll be up in one of the meeting rooms here.
Okay. And then it, does it also go through the Planning Commission? No, they didn't send it there.
Nope.
Where else? We sent it two places. Where was the other place?
It was just to Parks.
Parks.
Oh, back, okay, just to Parks. Okay, got it.
And I did make a request to put that on the agenda, so it'll be on there Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other correspondence for this two-week period? I can change the calendar, too. Okay. Seeing none, we can move close correspondence and go on to questions and public comment. We do have a public hearing today, so I will read that one. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium before you leave. Is there anyone who would wish to address the council at this time? Okay, you may go on up.
Why don't, is, does, is there a copy for everyone? All the council? I didn't have time to have a copy.
Okay. Why don't you make your presentation and then give us the, is that all right with you? If he gives it to us?
It needs to end up with the clerk, though.
Okay.
The documents.
Yeah. So, and your name is?
I'm John. Welcome, and I'm from Deerfield.
Okay.
And I'm calling about a matter that I think was first brought up to the council last month by Mr. Drescher. I requested compensation for expenses from an OWI arrest in April of last year, 2018. The charges were eventually thrown out because the blood test showed no, no sign of any alcohol or drug use at all. There were many issues involved in this arrest, and I think some of them were brought up in my letter. I sent a letter to the city manager dated April 2nd, bringing up many of those issues. I requested compensation for, I requested reimbursement for my towing fee and taxi fee. Mr. Drescher is familiar with, excuse me, with this request, and he called me and said the council approved that reimbursement, which is just about $176 in total and some change, but that I had to sign a waiver of any further claims against the city of Lake Mills, I believe. Is that sound correct? That's how I remember he spoke over the phone. And I think, I didn't want to do that at that time. I wanted to bring my case to the council because it's more than just a reimbursement for those expenses. There were some other issues involved. I think false statements were made against me on the police record for that arrest, and I, I have, I have more evidence of that than I was aware of when I first sent that letter. I've reviewed the, the video cam transcript of the incident, and I found major discrepancies between the, the video cam recording where the voices are audible and what is in the police reports of the OWI arrest. And I'm mainly here to say, I just, I don't want immediate action from the council on all of that because it's, you know, too much. I just want them to take this matter seriously and have someone, delegate someone to look at it in all due time and then get back to the council on that matter. If there are any questions, I'll have you answer them. Otherwise, should I submit this?
You give that to the city clerk or to Heather tonight.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your taking the time to come and speak to us tonight and, under public comment, and so, thank you very much.
Can I have one, one other request?
You can ask, but I don't know if I can do it.
I know I requested that the council review the, the question that I'm bringing up, additional to what I was in the previous letter. I also think, I also like to request that the towing fee be refunded to me without my, without requiring me to sign a waiver for any further action because I, I've waited a long time for that, more than a year, and I don't think I should just automatically have to sign away any, any other rights if, since there are other matters that are unresolved that might take a while to resolve on that. So that's my other request.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the audience, I guess there won't be any other public comment, so we will move on to the city manager's report at this time.
I provided you with a check register for April. I've also provided you with budget reports and investment reports, treasures reports. There was a document provided on, a proposal from the Rock Lake Improvement Association. It talks about using sewer fees to support paying farmers to change their practices around the lake. I don't think that's legal.
Yeah.
But, but there are other options that I discussed with Mr. Piles when he brought this to me, so he may be discussing those furthers. I believe that, that the two that I discussed were that we could do a stormwater utility. That would probably be something that would be legitimately within the scope of the fee. And then the other one is just outright general fund, but that it would require cooperation from the town on both levels. So that, that conversation is probably going to be coming back. But at the base level right now, I don't think that the proposal is, is workable from the standpoint of adding it to the sanitary sewer fees. Kind of a nice option because, you know, a lot of the people around the lake are on sanitary sewer, but I don't think there's a nexus between the actual sewer charge and the appointed goal of, of the charge that we would be paying in order to pay farmers for. We had looked once at a phosphorus one. You know, we, there is an option for us to purchase phosphorus credits, and we talked about buying them for farmers around the lake, and the DNR said, no, that wouldn't work because of where our actual discharge is located. We would need to be looking at, like Waterloo, who discharges onto a river that eventually ends up in the crawfish, which is where ours ends up, so that's where our phosphorus credits would have to come from. And this is a, this isn't actually phosphorus credits, so it's, it's more distant than, than that proposal, so I really believe that there would not be a, a legal option there. I know that they said we're not under Public Service Commission regulation at the wastewater treatment plant, but we do have to follow statutory and case law situations on fees and the uses of them, and, and I think that would be the case, but I did bring up two other options for them. So, those are out there. We have met with representatives of Lake Mills EMS, and I think we have the contract proposal that we want to put forward, so Dan's going to be sending that out. We probably need to meet with you again, Steve. The EOC updates, which are the new radios, are in, and we've put in all the frequencies. So the old radio is going to carry the Public Works Board, or the Public Works radio frequencies, and then the new ones will be, carry all the Dane County stuff as well as the Jefferson County emergency management stuff, so we have quite a broad spectrum of communication options in, in all of our EOCs now. We're still working on one item on the K-9 issue, and that's the memorandum of understanding with the WPPA on reimbursement for the officer. South Main Street, we continue to have weekly meetings. We had some notice that there were some issues with backfill and that there might be a lot of expenses, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit more later tonight as we look at the bonds. I, I don't know if you noticed, but signage is starting to go up, and then some of the signage that's local, we'll have to put up. We might have to make some changes because the layout isn't exactly the same as it used to be, and a lot of times we did, parking starts so many feet from the corner of the intersection, so like at the annex where there's, where it curves out now, that wouldn't be, there's a lot of, there's a couple parking spaces that got eliminated, and if you measured the distance, it wouldn't work out. And then they put a fire hydrant in that island, and essentially it was determined that you can't put parking on either side of the island next to the hydrant.
Oh, no. That wasn't the original plan. Whose decision was that, to do the fire hydrant there?
You know, I don't know, but that's a distance thing. It's done every 300 feet based on NFPA.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that that one got set there because of the, the situation in that area of the town and the distance between the hydrants. That would be a high, high fire risk area with a, so yeah, there's going to be some change in the original parking scheme. Access routes are changing daily. School is keeping us hopping with their requirements for having access to the building on what side and where, where they're hauling from, so that's been an issue for us. We'll continue to work on that.
The days are numbered, however.
No, actually, it's not.
Because of some.
Because the construction is ramping up, and the construction access is actually more important than the student access. We can get cars in and out of there easy. We can get low boys with, you know, 500-ton cranes on it or, you know, several thousand tons of steel, or 500 truckloads of gravel on one side and.
I hadn't thought of that.
200 on the other. So those are kind of issues. We're going to have to, what the state did on the project was they gave us a credit towards the trees, so we're responsible next year for planting all the trees on South Main Street. Been talking with Rob. He doesn't think we're going to get, be able to secure enough trees to plant the whole thing, so he's trying to work on a couple proposals on how long that should take and, how we should plant it. So that'll become, you'll see that in the budget reports as I start coming forward.
Is that a dollar or a limited nursery supply?
It's a limited nursery supply, because we, we're pretty close to what we got credit for, so we had a pretty good idea of what it was going to cost. That's not really the problem. It's going to be about $63,000, $65,000. It's getting that many trees, finding that many trees available, particularly of the type that we were specifying. So we may want to change somewhere, we may want to say we'll do that from downtown to East Lake Park Place, and then the rest of the way we'll go with a different type of tree. Even then, we may have problems.
Is it possible to broaden the radius of the area that we're looking at for nurseries?
Yes. I don't think that was, I think we're looking at a broad enough spectrum. It's just that there's so much construction and that, that getting the type of trees that we specify is going to be high demand.
Um, just.
Tree trees, especially in narrow tree lines, is going to be an issue.
I was going to say, because I, as one person, if, if we need to look at it for more than one year, you know, like we wanted it tomorrow, we have to go tomorrow and a year or tomorrow and two years, I think that's a possibility, too, from my perspective personally.
Yeah, I think, particularly when the project isn't going to be done until next year, we'll, we'll be able to plant the north half sometime during the year, and then the next year we'll come back and plant the south half. It shouldn't be a big issue, just dividing it up. This is like riding two different horses, one at a full run and one that can't stand up. I don't know if you noticed, but the guys are really flying down South Main Street. They are really pressing, and so there are a couple things that are kind of getting lost in the translation. Minor things, but they cost us money. On the other end of the spectrum, it's like getting the project going. Feel like we're still in the same spot we were three weeks ago, so we're trying to keep it moving and, and get to the point where we're, I think we're going to get done. They've already, they were supposed to be in the intersection of Madison and Mulberry June 1st. We're already pushed it back to July 1st, and I don't think they'll be there then. We do continue to have weekly meetings. We do keep up on all the issues there. We have the wall fence at the Fargo Mansion. We've been able to take care of that through an amendment to SHPO. Same with the Carriage Walk at 512 Mulberry. We had an agreement that we would move a retaining wall if we needed to, for any reason, move it. The only problem is, is when we got there, we found out that it was in the right of way, and so we had to remove it. So it was kind of like, okay, you can't ask us to move something that's not legally in the right of way. We, we get to move that and, and charge you for that, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll move it. We'll stack it on your property, and then you make sure that it's put in the right-of-way spot in the future, and so that's, the property owner was willing to go along with that, and so we're, we're coming. We also have a spot at Grand Street in Mulberry where we're regrading the whole front yard so we don't have to put in steps. And change orders are pretty similar to Main Street. They had the water main from Class 350 to Class 52 from, you know, with Muller Corporations, and we're using a lot of fill material, which isn't surprising on Mulberry because Mulberry is a muckhole. So there's not anything there to work with.
Mulberry is a what?
Muckhole.
Oh, muckhole.
How far down does the muck go?
As far as we're digging.
Forty feet?
Oh, no. No, it goes down further than that. It goes down at least 10 feet. So most of the work we're doing is above 10 feet.
No, I said 30 or 40 feet.
Oh, I don't know. I, I'm not going to go that far. I'm not going to experiment to find out. Kind of a lousy place to build a road.
They're never going to ever get it where that water doesn't pump out, are they? Because that's kind of a continuous source of water.
Yep.
Down there somewhere.
Yeah, it'll be construction methods from here on out. It'll be the fill, how it's installed and what materials go along with it and how it's compacted to make the road, because there's, the base material's very low quality.
Okay.
American Way, we went out and did proof rolls last Friday. We're looking at adding an extra foot of three-inch rock to substantiate the base, maybe putting down some geotextile material. There may be some additional cost to that one. That one is a tid six, so it'll be, initially it'll hit the general obligation bond. That might be an issue. Busy?
Yes.
The bike trail construction is pretty much done. There's a section that we're probably not going to get done because of an easement issue, but we've waited 20 years to get this far. We can wait another 20 years. Street maintenance contracts are back, signed, ready to go, so Duane will start working on getting those done. We authorized the archaeological report for Sandy Beach.
Good.
And we're using Commonwealth out of Milwaukee, same one we've used historically, because they have a good idea of what's going on in Lake Mills, the backgrounds. Grant was submitted last week on Friday, because June 1st was the deadline. They acknowledged receipt and said that they would be contacting us. We have approval to do some work in the cedars, so we're going to start trying to figure out how we're going to do that. Another building was received occupancy at the Megan site. The library, their needs assessment is going out for an RFP. The steps has been repaired. Did anybody notice the steps in the front of the building? Andrea? Okay, so, from here on out, it's the stormwater, the grading, some concrete driveways and sidewalks, and then the asphalt paving, so. Our last LSL report was done at the end of the month. We're down to about 50, so really low, and some of them are the hard ones or the ones that, you know, are marginally problematic. So we're going to put a big effort out this month to get them all done, close out the LSL reporting requirements. Radium is done. They accepted our proposal. We are not going to do any work on that until the water tower is painted. Figure we have enough problems with water in the city with all the new water mains being flushed and all the other issues going on that the water tower is under enough, the water system's under enough stress already, so we'll leave that until the end of the year. But that was substantially lower. We originally thought maybe 330. It's going to be about 20. That was a, that was a benefit. The water tower painting has started. You'd notice it if you were inside the tower.
We go there every day.
Yeah, probably not, then. We sent you the Rock Lake, the Rock Lake Activity Center invoices. Might be one or two out there yet, but from that standpoint, it's pretty close.
They've been very busy, the Rock Lake Activities.
Yes. The 26 acres that Horizon was looking at, we got a new offer on that. We met with the DNR and got basically approval to start there, so they'll probably be digging pretty soon.
Was it Horizon that was talking about putting a tower right here outside our building?
That was Ver.
Frontier?
Verizon.
Verizon.
Yes, that was Verizon. This is Horizon.
Horizon.
They're a, they're a manufacturer in the industrial park.
Horizon, okay, gotcha. Yeah, very close, so not the same.
And by the way, Verizon did renew their lease on that. They sent in their check and held another year.
Okay. I was wondering, because people have been waiting for that.
They, they renewed, but they haven't.
Seen any towers.
They haven't given us a time when they're going to construct. Been very active with Lake Mills High School on making sure that they can get access to the site, that what they build on site meets our requirements and that they, everything's in easements, and we've taken care of all that and make sure that they can stay on schedule as close as we can make it. The new budget software will probably be up in another 30 days, so you probably won't notice it until September, but the staffs will start. I sent them a notice today on how it works. I don't know if any of them had time to look at it. We've been pretty busy, but it's out there. Other than that, I'm done.
Okay. Another busy two-week period. So, moving on to item eight, acceptance of minutes of the Police and Fire Commission for April 18th, 2019, the Police and Fire Commission's special meeting on April 18th, 2019, and Planning Commission meeting for April 23rd, 2019. These minutes have been accepted and will be placed on file. Moving to item nine, council business. We will be opening a public hearing at this time, so I think, I have to declare that, right? Or just, did I just do that?
Been declared.
Huh?
It's been declared.
Okay, got it. All right. And it's on sidewalk cafe license renewal. So anyone who wishes to speak on the issue of sidewalk cafe license renewals may come to the podium, and since we have no people in the audience, it's going to be really hard to get someone to speak on this issue. So not an issue of great concern. I think most of the people in town are happy to see sidewalk cafes in general, and, so since there's no one here, do I disclose it? Okay. I closed the public hearing due to the lack of people to speak. And we will go on to item B of the council business, which is miscellaneous licenses. We have new tavern operators licenses. Would you please read those names, please?
Wayne Getz, Amslar Baze, Caitlin Richter, Seth Stark, and Elizabeth Edmick.
Okay. We do have five people who wish to get a new tavern operator's license. Do I have a motion by the council to issue those?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Moves us on to item number two, under miscellaneous licenses, liquor license renewal and successor agent for Walgreen Company. And we have in our packets the application for Walgreen's liquor license, and.
The background check on the successor agent just came back from the police department yesterday afternoon, so, and that all came back good.
Okay, so we have no red flags. Okay. So I need a motion to approve this liquor, this, so let's get rid of that. Renewal this alcoholic beverage license application. Do we?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. And I don't think there's any discussion, at least I haven't heard of any. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Let me move back to my thing here. Moving on to Item C, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda has seven items in it. Tavern operators license renewals, liquor license renewals, weight immeasures license renewals, cigarette license renewals, mobile home park license renewals, sidewalk cafe license renewals, and well operators license renewals. Is there any item on this consent agenda that a council member wishes pulled off for individual consideration? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the renewals on the consent agenda.
So, move.
Second.
I've got Doug and Steve as the second. All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, we could call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Moving on to Item D on the agenda, Resolution 1929, Authorizing to Borrow Funds Capital Expenditures. Would you read, let's see, well, definitely the title. Do we want to read more than that?
Do we want to interrupt at this point?
This is the one that we still want, need to go forward. This is the first one.
This is the one that what?
We wanted to discuss the next one. I just wanted to clarify with Steve.
So, this one we can act on. Okay. Would you read the title and the first two paragraphs, just so that people know what we're doing?
Resolution 1929, Authorization to Borrow Funds Capital Expenditures. Whereas the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin is presently in need of funds aggregating $600,000 for public purposes. See Exhibit 2, 2019 note. And whereas the City Council deems it necessary and in the best interest of the city that the sum of $600,000 be borrowed for such purposes upon the terms and conditions herein set forth.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve Resolution 1929?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this resolution? Questions, comments?
So, this is all stuff that was part of the budget?
Yeah.
And that software, is that your budgeting software?
Actually, it wasn't that expensive, but we, when we originally budgeted, we were looking at multiple different types, and some of them that were more compatible with our existing budgeting or accounting pack software were in the $20,000 range. So, we budgeted that much, but there just weren't enough people interested in participating with us, so we went with a different package that ended up being about 8,500, 87?
Eighty-seven.
So, what are the terms going to be on this then, for the borrowing?
On this borrowing, we're looking at 3.5% over 10 years.
How does that fall in line with the other projections or?
When we were talking to our financial advisors about the options, they did a comparison for us on what this borrowing and what they could do, because there are a lot of additional costs when we, it would have been a similar borrowing to a bond, but they would have called it a note. And they said that these 3.5% was very comparable. You know, the rates were a little higher than what they were seeing, but we're not paying those additional costs for doing the borrowing like we do for the bonds.
What's the difference between a note and a bond?
The bonding is where we're looking at it to be a longer period of time. These are the items in the capital budget and don't have a useful life that would be of the terms that a bond could handle. So, under the rules of the bonding, these items could not go in there.
There have been times where we've done bonds where they've done it, but they've changed the rules substantially in the last five years. And so, now they've created different, they've slid some things that we would normally have done under a bond. And if you looked at some of our own bonds, we'd have a seven-year schedule and a 10-year schedule and a 15-year schedule and a 20-year schedule. And then the items that would fall into that seven-year, they have a lifespan of that amount. They would have done that. Now, they just push all that short-term stuff into a note. So, then they ask you to do a comparison of borrowing at the local bank or doing the note. And there are expenses that go with doing the note versus the borrowing, so if the bank comes in at a certain interest rate, they're going to tell you, borrow at the bank. And if they come over that, then they'll tell you to do a note. And at this point in time, they're saying it's good to go through the bank.
So, does this, excuse me, how does this count against our borrowing capacity?
Same way. Exactly the same. Any form of debt counts against your capacity.
So, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion or questions?
Just because I can't remember everything, what was the 250,000 for this building? Is that roof or was that something else?
The chillers.
Well, the chillers, that's right.
Remember, we had, the chillers failed. And we got a fairly decent price on them, but then fluid in the system had to be totally changed because it was a different type of fluid, and so that added a little bit of cost. We ended up spending about the same, about 250, maybe a little bit less. But if you go out and look at them, the new chillers are about half the size of the old ones, maybe even less, really. When they came in, I was worried that they wouldn't keep up, but they've done fine.
Efficiency plus, huh?
Yeah, everything is at the high end of efficiency now.
And what did you say the total cost for the computer software was?
Eighty-seven hundred.
And is any of that like reoccurring or is it a one-time?
It's annual.
Annual?
Yep. But it's also on an annual contract.
Okay.
But once we do the initial, we shift it to operations. Actually, this probably was operations anyways, but do we have any operations? We had some operations money in this year, didn't we?
For the?
Capital.
Capital?
I think it was like eighty-seven thousand. So, there were a number of items that we had in the seven-year category that would, or under would.
Okay.
So, that software is a service? Is that what you're doing? Are you doing a capital outlay on a program that you're maintaining and then the 20% renewal each year?
Yeah, there's an initial outlay, and then there's a renewal each year. So, it's, what's the renewal, 1,400?
Okay.
I thought it was 87. The initial outlay, I thought they credited back the 2,400. That's why I was reading the bill.
Maybe. It's, they consider it a capital on the initial and then we have to incorporate it into operations.
Sounds like it's been well studied.
Yeah. We had to do an S and P report, so we went through this with a fine-tooth comb from front to rear.
Good. Glad to hear it. Call the roll.
So, Betsy has done a lot of research.
Good. Unless Betsy has something else to say.
No, I didn't have anything to add.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Moving along to Item E, Resolution 1930. Would you read that title and, let me see, what do we want to, oh, it's, do the same thing you did before with the two whereas's.
Resolution 1930, A Resolution Authorizing the Issueants in Establishing Parameters for the Sale of Not to Exceed $5,780,000 Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2019A of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and Providing the Payment of the Bonds and Other Details With Respect to the Bonds. Whereas the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin owns and operates a sewerage system and combined light and water utility, which are operated for public purposes as separate public utilities by the city and which are hereby combined for the purposes of this financing. And whereas, under the provisions of Section 66.0621, Wisconsin statutes, any municipality in the State of Wisconsin may, by action of its governing body, provide funds for extending, adding to, and improving a public utility or refunding obligations issued to finance such extensions, additions, and improvements from the proceeds of bonds, which bonds are payable only from income and revenues derived from any source by such utility and are secured by a pledge of the revenues and of the utility and may be secured by a mortgage lien on such utility.
I'm going to stop you there. I forgot this was 31 pages long. Don't think we want to be here until 31 pages have been read.
No.
So.
See when you hear what we're going to do.
Okay.
Is this it, Betsy?
This is it.
Okay. I need a motion and a s-
Actually, we're going to ask you to table this.
Oh, okay. Can you, Betsy, want to tell us what's going on?
Sure, sure. We are finding some of the costs associated with the bond are changing. With the revenue bond, we have some flexibility and are able to do that, and so we're going to ask you to table this to the next meeting so that we have an opportunity to get some better numbers in there. That Steve is coming into some change orders and some, I'm sure he'll explain a little better, the changes that he's encountering with the projects.
Okay. All right.
Then I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table. It's non-debatable. Who wants to talk? Should we let him talk on a table motion?
Sure.
Okay.
The bids were lower than we originally budgeted.
Oh, that's good news.
Right. The, and we have some other funds that are, you know, like, we aren't going to spend the 330 on radium, we're only spending 20. But we're looking at backfill expenses, so the additional sand needed to fill the streets has been more than we anticipated, and we're having a hard time determining what that is. One day, we were thinking it was $700,000 on South Main Street. Today, it was down to about 300,000. So, we're trying to tighten up the numbers so that when we go to the bond people and say, this is what we need, we don't under-bond. And we're trying to do the same thing for Mulberry. And both of these are primarily water and sewer projects that are experiencing the backfill problems. Normally, you'd see 20% backfill required on a project and 80% native going back in. There's a little bit of debate, in fact, there's a lot of debate on why that's not occurring on South Main Street, because everything from the mobile south has been pretty good native material. North was bad. And Mulberry's, like I said, it's bad. So, Mulberry, or South Main hit the 20% about midway up the hill, south of Mobile there. And it looks like to finish off the project, it's going to be some more. Now, we've discovered that there were some calculation errors in some of it, and we're trying to figure that out.
Are the calculation errors in our favor?
Yes, in our favor. They were providing, I don't know how technical this is, but they were providing the width of the trench box full depth. And actually, the way the bid reads is that the first 18 inches is a stone bedding along with the pipe, so you have to subtract those out. And so, they were just giving us one calculation and they hadn't subtracted it out, so now we're going through and subtracting it all out and see how much that's in our favor. I haven't seen anything on Mulberry yet. They're working on that one.
We may be still on ground in December at Mulberry's.
You know, the, we kind of laughed. The gentleman who's running the South Main Street project on the water and sewer part said he would be in Minnesota on another job in September. And this, of course, you know that project's supposed to run until November, so he thinks he's going to be done that fast. Whereas, so we've been kind of joking internally that the one on Mulberry may not be done until spring of 2019.
Well, let's hope not, but could happen.
Yeah, we might have flipped. We might be done on South Main Street and.
You never can tell.
Yeah, that's why I said, it's like riding two different horses. One leg's way up here and one leg's way back here, and you're trying to keep up with the paperwork that you have to deal with on both of them and the problems that come with them.
And Mulberry is a very old road, and they did things very different 100 years ago.
It's different in that it was a county highway, not a state highway. So, even in the early part of the century, when probably both those roads were done, one was done at a state standard and one was done at a county standard, substantially different construction methods. Of course, the street was already there and, of course, in buggy days, and so laying a road to today's standards is a totally different issue.
Yep, very different.
So, in other words, it's basically, historically, we got to take and update everything.
Yes. When we build roads now, we build them to last, so we go back and we put in the material that's required. And, you know, there are all kinds of little issues that you discover, like someone's sanitary sewers in there and kind of running uphill, and they've got a grinder pump, but they really shouldn't have had to had a grinder pump, but their lateral settled because of the concrete patio on the front. So, if we get our sanitary sewer a little bit lower in the future, they could probably get rid of their grinder pumps, so we drop it. We started an inch higher, so instead of running at a four-and-a-half grade, four-and-a-half percent grade, we're running at a 3% grade. That gets harder, substantially harder for the contractor to install, and the types of materials he has to lay under change substantially. So, going from, you know, maybe a couple inches to a deeper bed so that there's less settling on that, because at five, you can take a little bit of settling and you'll still have a downhill flow, which is absolutely critical in a sanitary sewer, wherein you're at a three, you can't take hardly any settling. And so, you're, the bed that you have to lay on it has to be at a substantially higher standard. And so, those are the kinds of things that we're, you know, so when we came out of Louis Street and turned south, and there are several houses down there, we ended up starting a 10th higher, which is an inch higher off of Louis Street, and when we got to the first house, we were a 10th higher and they were already on an upslope. So, to go back and lay the pipe back out of there and get it at the depth we needed and the change of material, and then, as you know, we've been pumping water out of that nonstop from the-
It's been nonstop.
And so, getting any type of material that's all enough to work with is difficult. So, everything you take out, you haul away, it's basically muck. And you haul in sand. That means a very specific material grade that gets tested, gets proctored on a regular basis, and that has to go back into there. And what you use for sanitary sewer is different than what you use for a road grade, and so, it's, it gets rather complicated, but in the long run, it's a little bit, it wasn't a typical project. Neither one of them has been a typical project. So, we're going to have to spend a little bit more time making sure that we've got the money to get the projects done.
Well, and the last thing you want to do is do it wrong and have to rip it all up later and- Well, and the last thing you want to do is do it wrong and have to rip it all up later and fix it. So, I mean, and I think the people on Mulberry Street, although they're not happy, they would rather have it done right the first time.
Yeah, when you're saying, Mulberry being particular in that all the sanitary grades start at the wastewater treatment plant, so you're only going to get so deep. So if you get a flat spot in there or you get a sag, that's actually where the water sits. And it starts backing up and it creates where that low spot is, creates a spot where settlement, materials settle out and it starts to plug that. And so you're regularly having sanitary sewer backups into your basement. You'd rather have it done right the first time.
Oh, gosh, yes. We all would rather have it done right now. Thank you. Okay. So we, this is now, we, have we voted on to table or not?
Not yet.
No.
Can we do a vote on tabling, please? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And it is the understanding that what we vote on at the next meeting will be a better number than the one we have tonight. So you won't mind that, will you? Okay, good. Okay. And let me see where I am here. Back on my agenda. Moving to item F. Am I right? Okay, F. Okay, and would you please read the title? Just the title on this one, please.
Resolution 1931, resolution establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $2,385,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2019B.
Another 23-pager. Who's, do we, let's get the motion. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1931?
I think we want to-
We want to table this one too.
Okay, so, because it goes with the other one?
Right.
Okay.
I move to table.
Second.
I, I got Mike over here a second. So I got a motion and a second to table. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
This one isn't the same as the other one. This is not, there's no backfill.
Right.
This is a road base that went past the roll, the proof roll, which means that it's too wet. And the, and, um, of course, in the industrial park, it might be hard to get it dry. Uh, but there's still some debate as how much we need here. It might not be enough to be worried about. But we want to make sure our numbers are good, so we decided to wait on this one to it. We debated it today and we just decided, hey, we can wait till the 18th and then we know that we'll know better. I don't know that we'll have the perfect answer, but we'll know better.
And they've already scheduled the sale for the 19th, with the day after the council meeting, the sale of the bonds.
Are we still looking at the same rate, interest rate?
Are you talking 3.5%?
Yeah.
Well, that isn't quite how the bonds work, but, um, I just read something that, um, our financial advisor, someone at their um, business had written and that they're seeing some really good rates coming out, so we'll see where it ends up.
Their last statement to us was, is we picked about the best time in the last two years to sell bond.
Yeah. So I'm hoping that it holds out that long, just another couple weeks.
Do we have a bedding problem over at American Way like we got at Mulberry? With muck and stuff?
Uh, no. American Way is actually a fine sandy silt. Problem there is, is that the water table is so high that it stays in that. So in weather like this, it just doesn't dry out and you can't get the base set up. So it tends to push down and the fines push up into the rock and that's, you don't want that, so then you have to take additional. Usually, what it's called is a EOB or an EOB or something like that. Anyways, you dig down at an additional foot of three-inch rock. And a lot of times you might put a geotextile material under that so that it keeps the fines from pushing up into the rock. And what we looked at, we thought, let's just do it across that whole road. Now, historically, we've put in the additional one foot, but we've never put in the material before. And the roads are set up pretty good. But this year is proving to be wet enough again, between last year and this year, it's proving to be wet enough again that we might not be able to do that. Where the engineers are still working on it and checking it out and doing all their calculations. And so I just, I wanted to be sure. Particularly on a geo-bond, it's not as flexible as a revenue bond. We couldn't come in and say, hey, we need an additional $300,000. We couldn't do that. So we, this one, I, I need to be more precise on. So I told the engineers, if it's not in there, give me the numbers so that we can get it in there before I finalize the numbers, because once you bond, you, you bonded. Then our only option would be to come back in, take a note, and then add it to the bonds next year.
Well, let's hope we don't have to do that. So that moves us on. Item F has been tabled to the next.
We didn't vote yet. Okay, let's vote. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Thank you, by the way. I thought it was all done.
I do.
Oh, maybe we did. You did it twice.
We did do it twice.
Okay.
We got it, we got it no matter what.
Okay, item G, resolution 1932, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 1932, action on claim presented by John Quigley for fees alleged to have resulted from Lake Mills Police Department policies and procedures.
Okay, is there a motion for resolution 1932?
I move adoption of resolution 1932 to disallow the Quigley claim.
I have a motion to disallow. And is that the, the way we want this to read? Yes.
Is what you're, what you-
A disallow?
That's the way the motion is drafted.
Okay, that's what I'm checking. Yep.
That was, that was the discussion we had at the last meeting, is if he doesn't accept the proposal we gave him, we were going to move to disallow.
So I need a second.
A second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Is this something that's discussable or not?
Certainly.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay, any questions, comments on this item before we vote?
So the next recourse he would have is take us to court, correct civil action?
Well, seeing no other discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, moving to item H. Trusty little computer going. Ordinance 1204, would you read what you need to read? For the third reading, third reading. Does she have to read the whole thing?
No, I believe just the title, that's it.
Okay, title is fine.
Ordinance 1204, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Personal identification number 00207140732006.
Okay, now we have had nobody come forward here or, this was at the planning commission too, and nobody had a problem with it there, so unless someone, let's see, we need a motion, right?
Adopt, correct.
A motion to adopt ordinance 1204.
So move. Sorry.
Uh, I'll give it to Mike over here. It was a tie. Okay, so, um, we've got a motion and a second. And, um, would you call the, oh, anybody else have any issues? No? No? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Motion, uh, ordinance 1205, would you do the same thing there, please?
Ordinance 1205, amending chapter 279, building construction, article 32, water and sewer mains and service pipes.
Okay, so this is also, also the third reading. I need a motion to approve ordinance 1205.
So move. Second.
Duggan first, okay. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on this one? Again, we haven't had anybody against it or anything. Call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. Moves us on to item 10, recommendations for future agendas. Uh, Steve, do you have anything that you know of off the top of your head that needs to come on our next agenda that we should be aware of? Other than what we talked about already tonight?
Not off the top of my head. I know that we'll have all the bond stuff back.
Yeah, the ones that we tabled tonight will be coming back on, which is, you know, obvious. Anybody on the council have anything that they want put on the next meeting? Do we want to say anything about the July meeting at this point?
I already mentioned, uh, to Steve and Mike that we won't be having a meeting, uh, the first week of July.
Okay, because the first week falls on the second and-
Fourth of July week.
When we can, we like to not have a meeting that night. However, that doesn't always happen, so, um-
Probably 15 out of the last 20 years it has.
Yeah. So, um, as of right now, there won't be a meeting the first Tuesday of July. It'll be the second, the third Tuesday of July will be the-
Just one meeting that month.
One meeting in the month of July. So, um, anybody else have anything else before I adjourn the meeting? Yep.
Congratulations, Cooper.
Thank you.
Are you at the graduation? You look good.
Thank you very much. So you're to be done.
So you'll be on here another two and a half months?
Sounds about right, yeah. Stand for as long as I can.
Good. And then we, then we'll drag someone else in kicking and screaming?
I've got a couple people that are interested, that are excited, that I talked to about it.
Oh, that's good.
And graduation went well?
Went really well, smooth. Wasn't hot in the gym this year. They got the AC kicked in. The auditorium speeches were short, got out of there pretty early. It was nice.
All right, you got them all, all trained down there, huh?
I had 30 years of hot graduations.
He was senior advisor for 30 years. Memorial Day weekend, it always used to be. That's kind of nice. It's not that anymore, because it messed up Memorial Day weekend. Okay, is there nothing else? Meeting is adjourned.